I'm calling to order the July 22nd open, uh, meeting of the Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anybody else in the room recording? Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're moving along to public comment. Um, I would like to ask this board to pause for a moment of silence in remembrance of the recent passing of Howard Goodrich, the husband and former board chair, Doreen Goodrich, and also for Betty Ann Carpenter, the mother of our current board member, Dan Carpenter. Thank you. Um, we'll move along to public comment. Um, John Lozon, Lozone, is signed up? Mr. Lozon, I'd like to remind you, per board policy, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is John Lozon, I live at 10 Main Street, Auburn. Uh, an update on the pollution contact that I had. Uh, I had two people come to my house, looked over the edge. They said another person would be calling from another department. They did. Uh, I called back, they said they're on vacation till Monday. I called back that Monday and, uh, someone that worked with them said they would be getting back to me, they were on vacation for a week and I still haven't heard back, so. Uh, also, uh, I was, uh, updated February 22nd on the illegal aliens. Is there anything, uh, since then, in the past five months, that has, uh, changed or anything? Any new information about them? Are there more there? I mean, I saw a picture of a bunch of mattresses that were bedbugs, you know, in the, in the back of one of these hotels here, that, uh, that was related to that situation. And, uh, I was just wondering if there's any more besides that that we could be told about? Probably not. Uh, I spoke about transparency and accountability the last meeting that I were at. Uh, first time I met you, Mr. Kevin Overch, the Town Manager, I was sitting back there and you come up and asked me if I was John Lozon. I said, yes, I am, who are you? He said, I'm the Town Manager. And I said, do you have a name? And you said, yes, my name is Ed Kastenover, and I shook your hand. And then we had the meeting and, uh, I called your office about three, four days later, uh, looking for an update on what we'd spoken about, about, uh, all those kids and, uh, the pollution and the cancer. And I asked for an update and I said, uh, where are we at with that? What have you done? You said, nothing. And then I said, what about these effing kids? And then you hung up on me. And then I called back and you didn't answer your phone. So I came and I visited you next door over there at your office. And, uh, you know, you're good enough to speak with me for about 15 minutes. Your secretary came and reminded you a couple of times that you had a meeting, but you're still good enough to stay there and speak with me. And, uh, we had a conversation. One of the things we conversed about was, uh, me showing respect to you when, when I spoke on the phone and, and stuff like that. And I started thinking, uh, here's a public servant talking to the public about respect, how they need respect, uh, how they speak on the phone. Yes, I said, these effing kids. And the fact of the matter is, it's free speech, you know that, Mr. Kastenover. You knew it when you hung up on me, you know? Uh, oh, excuse me, uh. Anyhow. It, it just seems like I'm not getting my money's worth here. Uh, you know, everyone up here is an elected official. Mr. Kevin Overch, you're an appointed official by the selectmen. Uh, what do you make a year, Mr. Kastenover, may I ask?
Mr. Lozon, this is not a Q and A period. You're allowed to comment for a period of three minutes in accordance with the board's policy.
Okay, I was just asking a question. Uh, does, uh, $237,000 a year, last, last year's salary ring a bell?
That is incorrect.
Incorrect, but is it close?
No.
Okay, pardon me. I, I was misinformed. Uh, you know, the reason I come up here is because my, the very first time I come here, the reason is, my wife received a phone call and she was harassed for 26 minutes and 54 seconds by an Auburn police officer that had no business calling her. My wife's never been arrested in her life. My wife's never even smoked a cigarette in her life. She's been living in Auburn here with me, she's 54 years old. She's been living in Auburn here with me for a very long time. I've been living here for 58 years. You know, uh, it was uncalled for. The guy's bringing up, uh, uh, financial information about the IRS at me or my wife that, that, that someone told. He's bringing up all this stuff, calling me a liar and, uh, tell my wife I'm a liar. I'm sure my three minutes is up by now, but, uh, you know, i- if you want to know the reason when it's all started, it's over that one patrolman. It's not anyone in this room either, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, we had, moving along to number four, community organizations. We have none. Um, we do have presentations and public hearings. Um, there is a outdoor entertainment license. Um, there would be a need a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, I believe we have, um, the individual on the Zoom.
Yes, hello, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the board for allowing me to come before you today and, uh, to discuss our proposed, uh, event that we'll be having at Auburn Mall. Um, as you know, we have a circus that's going to be coming in. It's called Flip Circus, which is a family-owned and family-operated business. It's a family event with no alcohol. Uh, you know, it's a, it's an art space show, so there's no animals. You have, you know, trapeze artists, you have acrobats, you have clowns. So it's a really nice two-hour sit-down show for families to come and visit. Um, we are asking for permission to hold this event, uh, from, hold on, let me pull up the date, I had it here, sorry. Um, from October, uh, August 21st through September 4th, which would include tear, setup and tear down. Um, setup would be October, August 21st through August 23rd. And we would have shows from August 23rd to September 3rd. And shows would be Monday to Friday at, uh, 7:00 PM and it would end at 9:00 PM. And we would have, uh, shows on Saturday at 12:00, 3:00 and 6:00 PM. The show within, I mean, I'm sorry, 1:00, 4:00, 7:00 PM, I apologize. And the show would end at 9:00 PM, the last show. And on Sunday, we would have a show at 12:00, 3:00 and 5:00 PM as well. And, uh, as I mentioned, this show has been traveling to, in the Northeast through several different cities. Uh, we've had our event two years in a row in Berlin, Massachusetts. Uh, we've had it two years in a row in Hyannis, Massachusetts, uh, two years in a row in North Attleboro. We're actually heading over there tomorrow. And, uh, we are, you know, excited to, to have the opportunity to present our show there in Auburn, at the Auburn Mall. We think it'd be a great addition to the community. Uh, like I said, it's a family event. It's, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's something wonderful where everyone can go together and see a show.
Thank you. Um, does anybody in the public have questions? Certainly, could you just come up to the podium and provide your name?
I live in Auburn.
And your address, I'm sorry.
Uh, for Mariana Abbott.
Thank you, please go ahead.
My question is, what part of the Auburn Mall is the circus planning to set up? I, I got the plot plan, but I couldn't figure that out.
I do believe, based on the site map, it is going to be set up on the Sears, in the Sears parking lot area.
The Sears Inn.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, I know that they've had the, in the past years, they've had, um, carnivals there. They used to set up on the other side.
Yes.
So that it's no longer available, so they have to move to the Sears Inn?
Yes.
Do they have adequate space on that side to set up a circus?
Um, yes, sir, we should do.
Okay.
So they've already scoped out the?
I do believe, yes, there is a site plan, um, available.
Okay, right.
Did you want to see it?
Do you want me to present the site plan?
Provide you mine.
I, I got this copy here.
Um, yeah, mine looks a little bit different. I'll give you mine, oh, sorry.
It's a bit small, I couldn't make it. But I, I understand what the layout is.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
Are there any other questions from the public? Do board members have any questions?
So, uh, how many, so this is a show, so you'll be selling tickets. What, what's the expected occupancy? And how many cars do you expect to be on site?
Yes, sir, during the weekdays is our slower time. So, uh, Monday to Friday, we usually have about 200 guests and, uh, most of them do come as families of four. So you're looking at about 50 vehicles, plus or minus. And on weekends, we can get between 300 and 400 people, uh, that come to the show, uh, for the weekend show. Cause you're, everyone's off, so you get more people coming in on Saturday and Sunday versus the weekdays.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Uh, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, is there a motion on the application?
I make a motion that, uh, we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much, I believe you have a second request?
Let me see, what was the second one? Would, they were both for, so it's for the entertainment license and then the carnival amusement park license? I guess they're, they, they go together, I guess?
Yes, so we have to take them as separate matters? Cause they're two separate licenses?
Okay.
Um, so we would need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, are there any public comments on the second? The, um, carnival amusement park license? Uh, sure, certainly, please step up. Yeah, of course.
But, um, my question is, so the carnival and the circus are separate events?
It is the same event, it just requires and it needs an out, you have to do an outdoor entertainment license and then it requires a separate carnival, um, amusement park license. So it's?
Just by the nature of the activity?
Yes, yeah.
So, um, now, I got one of these letters, uh, a month or so ago, maybe two months ago. About another carnival, is that a separate one from this one?
Yes, this is solely a circus and the other one is a, um, small carnival.
That'd be set up in the same area as the circus?
Yes.
Side of the mall?
It'll also be set up on the Sears side.
Madam Chair, the carnival is actually this upcoming week. I believe it's the 25th to the 28th. Yes.
It's just the one week?
It's just the one, yeah, it's just those four or five days.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, do board members have questions on the second license? Um, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, is there a motion on the license?
All right, I move that, um, we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much for joining us, sir.
Thank you, y'all have a good evening.
You too.
I appreciate it.
Um, next we have an outdoor entertainment license for the Auburn Police Association. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there someone here? Hi, could you just give us your name and tell us a little bit about the event?
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Stephanie Hayward. I have with me Officer Dominic Walker. He has been the main organizer of all this. I'm just his backup, his peer support. Um, we're hosting what's called National Night Out. It's a national community event. It's always held on the second Tuesday in August. Um, it's been being done in communities across the country for many years now. We're just finally jumping on board. Um, we're hoping this event will be a, a big community outing for, for our community, mainly kid-focused. Um, it's a free event for everyone to attend. The only, um, items that will cost food would be food trucks that we're going to have there. Um, but entry, admission, all the games, everything that we're going to have there will be for free. Um, some of the items that we will have there will be to include bounce houses, uh, dunk tank, you know, if anyone would like to join. Um, we're going to have, like, fast pit softball, all kinds of different games for kids to play. We're also going to have demonstrations from both Town Canines, um, as well as our drone unit and, um, some of their items that they bring along with them as well. We also have live music as well, so we did, um, go with the outdoor entertainment license for that.
Great. Um, do you, does anybody in the public have questions? Or comments? Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair, I just, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for organizing this great event. Uh, it's a great opportunity for the community to come out and interact with our public servants and I just want to thank you for everything you do.
We're really excited about it, thank you. And Officer Walker's done all the legwork, so.
Thank you.
Um, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the application?
Yeah, um, I move that we approve this license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well, thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Like to make a motion that we waive the fee?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, moving along, we have a transfer of the alcohol club license. Um, are the applicants here? Would you like to just come up? Um, and just state your name and just give us a little bit of information about what you?
Good evening, I'm James Hackett. I'm the current president of the Century Sportsman's Club and, uh, looking to have the, um, all alcohol license transferred into me from, uh, Mr. Zina.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, are there any questions from the public regarding this license? Are there any questions by the board? Uh, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the application?
Um, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of license and change of manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a, a yes as well. Thank you for coming in, your license is approved. Um, next we have departmental items. Is this you?
Yes.
Excellent.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, I want to inform you that we had a, a rating review as a result of a roughly, just shy of $2.5 million, uh, bond issued to meet our, uh, capital needs. Um, the rating review was held on July 8th and we provided a rating report to you. I am happy to report that, uh, Standard and Poor's reaffirmed our AA+ rating. Actually, during the course of, uh, our, um, wrapping up the rating review, there was some indication that they may consider us for AAA, um, which was very positive, although our wealth factors did not measure up to a, a AAA, uh, rating. Although I can tell you, with some of the recent housing and some of the, um, movement of population, there's an expectation that our wealth factors may increase and may get us over that hurdle. Uh, but it was nice to hear that they, we, that they would consider a AAA rating for us. And some of the highlights on our credit review, uh, were extremely stable as a result of roughly 40% of our reserves making up, um, our total annual expenditures as of fiscal 2023. I can tell you that, um, the outlook by S and P uh, is very stable, reflects Auburn's stable tax base, uh, which in turn supports the town's robust financial position and debt burden. Um, we went out to market, uh, for the two, roughly 2.5 million. The market was, we were pleased by the number of responses. We had eight bids. Uh, the, um, the bid, uh, which is part of the next item that is before the board, uh, was awarded to Piper, Sandler and Company with a true interest rate cost, net interest cost of roughly 2.80%, which is very good. Um, so, positive news, uh, certainly that helps us get a lower rate by maintaining a, a, a AA+ rating.
Do board members have questions? Uh, okay, so moving along to the second item. It is a board vote on the maximum useful life of departmental equipment. And the board vote to approve an award and execute bonds of the bonds of 2.31 million.
Just a quick note, um, I indicated just shy of 2.5. It was actually 2,495,000. We received a premium on the sale of that bond, which we have to use to pay down, uh, the initial, um, the initial value of that. So the net debt is 2.310. Um, after our issuance cost, we had about 88, $185,000 that we were able to pay down on this purpose. Um, so that results in savings over the 10-year note, over the 10-year purpose. Uh, and with that, Madam Chair, uh, this vote is required in order to effectuate that sale.
Uh, okay. Certainly.
So I do see, um, the authorization dates, um, go back several years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, is that typical? And is there a limit on how far they can go back?
So, um, yes, it is typical because what we normally do is we ban it for a period of two years. And at the end of two years, then we roll it into a, uh, into a long-term bond. There are some authorizations, um, within the period that you're seeing that still has not been bonded. We don't want to bond anything that we're not going to move forward on. So in some cases, there are residual balances. We typically take a look at that annually and clean it up if those purposes are no longer needed. If they are, we'll carry it over and it shows on our balance sheet as loan authorized and unissued.
Are there any other questions? Uh, is there a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, does this all have to be read?
So I think if you make reference to what has been provided to by the board, um, and just read, uh, further voted clauses?
Okay.
I think that would suffice.
Um, Madam, I make a motion that, um, we vote that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below is hereby determined pursuant to, um, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1. Further voted that the sale of the $2,310,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2024 bonds of the town dated August 14th, 2024, the bonds, to Piper, Sandler and Company at the price of $2,551,439.34 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on August 15th of the years and in the principal amount and bear interest at the respective rates, uh, as presented on the document. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation, distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated July 8th, 2024, and a final official statement dated July 15th, 2024, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15, Chapter 2-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holder of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continued disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relative securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents in all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. And finally, further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair is a yes as well.
Thank you, and I think you have to, you have to certify the signature, Mariana?
Okay.
I think she has some bonds that would have to be signed.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Signing. So the first, these are, I think, they're just, you see?
Okay.
Sign right here.
Okay.
They're all the same. I can give you those for...
They're all the same. I can give you those for, I'm sure I'm not giving you an extra one. I was doing this earlier. So there's 10 of them.
Okay.
Do those have to be signed as well?
Yeah. Handing down. And this one is the signational litigation official certificate. And that has to be signed three places again. We're all the green now.
Okay.
They're not in order anymore.
It's all good.
Getting signed, that's what's important.
I know.
This is three.
Okay.
All on the greens. This is the tax certificate. And again, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Oh, is there an, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, that was me, like trying to like add my papers into it.
This is the continuing disclosure.
Okay.
Again, three. Everything's three signatures.
Perfect.
Sharon, I'm going to give you this now. Moving along to 60, a request by the Fire Chief to declare surplus property. I believe Chief Coleman is in the Zoom.
He is, Madam Chair. Chief, can you hear us?
Good evening, Madam. I can. Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board.
Sorry, what?
Steve, Chief, can you say that again?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Evening.
So there's a request by the Fire Chief to declare surplus. Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair, through you to the chief. Chief, is this the ambulance that's sitting up at DPW's yard for the past year?
It is not. That is our old ambulance one, which has already previously been declared surplus. Ambulance three is the ambulance that is currently sitting behind fire headquarters. Both of those trucks will be going out to auction, but our mechanic has been salvaging parts off of them to keep in spare because we do have a similar ambulance that some of those parts can be duplicated. So we've been spending some time just kind of stripping some of those parts off. So like I said, we do already have a previous surplus vote on ambulance one. With this vote tonight, we'll be going out to auction with two vehicles. And then as the letter stated, ambulance three will be traded to a dealership just because this ambulance is in better condition than the one behind the DPW.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
So, Chief, just to follow up on that, it's in better condition, so you believe that that's the best value you'd get and you wouldn't get the return via auction? Is that correct?
That is correct. So the ambulance that is behind headquarters, we've been offered $15,000 for the dealership out of Minnesota, typically at auction. This would go anywhere between $3,000 and $5,000 in its condition.
Excellent. Thank you.
The question, I think, for Ed Casanova is when the sale occurs, where do the receipts go? Into the general fund?
So when the sale occurs, we take those proceeds and we set up what they call a special revenue account and reserve those that could be used for future use for either the purchase of an ambulance or upgrades to fire department equipment. And I say that only because the original proceeds used to purchase the ambulance came out of ambulance receipts. So it's not due to the general fund. It gives us a reason to set those funds aside, repurpose those for ambulance-type expenses.
Got you. Are there any other questions?
I make a motion that we declare Engine 2 and Ambulance 3 as surplus for disposal purposes as outlined in the Fire Chief's letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Good evening to the board. Have a great night.
Thank you, Chief.
Moving along, we have a request to authorize the use of $1.4 million of ARPA funds for various municipal HVAC upgrades. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I know Mr. Fahey is here to get into some of the details we provided to you, the cost by municipal location. We are seeking the use of 1.4 million, and we have roughly, let me see, a little over, I think, 1.415 million. I did provide a status report, which I will have to refer to. But the actual cost exceeds 1.4 because in every situation, there's a rebate provision that would result of us doing these upgrades. The total rebates, and I think Joe can outline that, is roughly $800,000 or $900,000, which we could then use towards the project cost. The project cost is actually more than 1.4. It's about 1.9 million. The residual balance of those rebates could be set aside and it can be used for future energy cost enhancements for another municipal building if we need to do that down the road. So with that, Joe, if you want to highlight some of the aspects of, and I want to applaud Joe, he's put a lot of work into this. He used a Siemens report that was funded through the OPERA study early on as a basis for consideration. So Joe's here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi. Do board members have questions?
Yep. So you used the Siemens report as a basis. Are you taking all their recommendations into account in this, or?
Not 100% of them, but a lot of them we are.
And Joe, again, I don't know if you know off the top hat, which recommendations aren't you proceeding with and what were the reasons?
It's pretty much all the air quality ones. So what we're focusing on, we're focusing on, I mean, I can explain this really briefly. At our high school, we have six rooftop units. We have more than six, but what we did was we took the biggest ones because we get the biggest rebates. Example, I get a 68-ton air handler for our auditorium, which we have, we have a bank of compressors. We have like six compressors in one tandem in one bank. Currently have one compressor that's down. If I was to replace that one compressor, if I put it out to bed, it's roughly about $20,000. So we've been kind of waiting for these rebates to come aboard because what we were able to do is, again, the high school's 18 years old, so we're getting up there on age, we can replace the whole tandem, right, and switch it over to a heat pump system. And that way there, everything will be all brand new. It ties into our BMS system. We're reducing our carbon footprint. We're getting $3,500 per ton, right? So that's an awful lot of money. And however, there's an awful lot of work involved in that as far as like engineering, as far as structural engineering. These units, I'm kind of lumping this all in, so if I'm going too fast, just tell me to slow down. These units are about the size of very big refrigerators. So you're going to be putting like four of them on that auditorium platform, okay? Again, the units come, they create them, they put up on the roof, they take the old system off. So now we have pretty much not maintenance-free, but we've got brand-new equipment. Plus, we're getting $3,500 per ton. So on that one unit alone, we're looking at $238,000, right? There's a lot to be said in that, too, because the estimated cost is about 600, right? And I don't need to read this because you see it all in the package right here. But that's the idea. And I have six of them at the high school to do. And the plan is, is to do these projects and not just keep these projects for the high school, for the rebate money. We need to, we want to pool them all together to make them used as municipality, so we all can benefit from it. Like, we'd bounce over to this building here. Very quickly, you get the town hall, you got a 40-ton carrier unit that's on the side of our building that's pretty much hasn't been in existence for quite some time. So what we're able to do is put a heat pump system in, remove that piece, right, and also tie in a BMS system that we have. So now you're going to get heating and air conditioning in our system, which is really the way the system was kind of designed probably over 30 years ago. So estimated cost for that is $100,000 with a rebate of 140. So now we take that $40,000, right, and we put that in, I'm just going to call just the kitty, for lack of a better word, right? And in that kitty, we can replace, we have some drives downstairs, right, that ramp up our speed of our air handlers. We can change all that and tie it into our BMS system, again, to reduce our energy, lower our carbon footprint. Now we're using pretty much our heat pumps for our heating and air conditioning here. And when it gets really cold, say below zero, we still have a boiler downstairs that was put in probably five or six years ago. I think we did those through the Green Community Grant as well. So we're not eliminating those. We're just using those for our swing seasons and we're using those for, on the real cold days. And the beauty of this whole thing is, we've had a couple frozen coils over probably the last 20 years as well, which basically shuts down the town hall. The nice thing about the heat pump, the heat pump coil basically goes in there, right? So now that hot water coil is still going to be in there, but we're going to put some controls on. What it will actually do is drain the water out, right? When it gets below, say, 20 degrees, we're able to, we're able to put a lot of bells and whistles through the BMS system to prevent something like that from happening again, which is a huge cost savings and prevents a big inconvenience here. So that's the whole mindset that we're trying to do. I can go over each building about that. But the key of it is, is if we can use the ARPA funds to support and buy the equipment, now we take the rebate money, which is like, again, repeat myself, $3,500 per ton, put down in the kitty, that's going to help us do additional work, like say at the library, which is all the police station. The police station, we have, police station is a pretty exciting project. We had a 25-ton chiller in the back that's really, I think we're only running off one compressor. I think the other one is down. I'm not 100% sure. But I know we've had problems before in the past. We also have a boiler that needs to get replaced. Guys, it doesn't make any sense to replace that boiler as like it is now because you've got, say, a five or six-section boiler. We don't want to replace it with a five or six-section boiler. We want to put up a condensing small boiler because if we replace the chiller with the rebates that we get, we'll be able to do heating and air conditioning. So now we'll be circulating both heating and air conditioning through our main system. Now, in our swing season and on the real cold days, now we can use that smaller condensing boiler to, again, reduce our natural gas, reduce the carbon footprint, and keep us in line with what we need to do as a municipality as far as saving energy. And it's a great opportunity. And as our funds start to diminish, because I get prices right now, guys, but I'll be honest with you, these prices can change. They can change in a heartbeat, right? But if we have that pool of money to be able to offset it, we can, we can jump to the library, do the same thing at the library, follow same suit with the DPW, the main offices. And then in the end, when we're finally all done, now we can utilize next year's Green Community funds to cap off whatever that we didn't accomplish. So it's a great opportunity.
I think one of the reasons I was asking that question, because I think there's about $500,000 remaining if we were to approve as this requested, but if that money could be used to continue these efforts and reduce our go-forward utility costs, like, I think that might be something I'd like to consider if there's value in allocating more money to this to make that go further and faster.
If I may, I know I've had a discussion with our shore superintendent, Nick Schwartz. The Warren Street Pump Station is wrapping up. He believes there's going to be about $200,000 of excess funds available to turn back. It is my plan to meet with every department that has some stake in the OPERA funds, get an update on the status of those reports to see if there are any surplus funds that we can turn back into the unobligated item within OPERA that will allow us to reconsider other uses for those funds, the energy piece being one of them.
When do we have to obligate our ARPA funds? I think it's coming up soon.
I think it's this coming December.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question, is that obligate by December or is that expend?
Obligated by December. I think you have two years after that.
You have two years to expend, okay.
I love this ask. I love that, you know, you've put a lot of work and effort into getting this plan together. And I'd love to see that come to fruition. I'd love to see the reduction in costs. And it's great that we're getting these rebates. They're not always available, so excellent work on that. Thank you.
Hudos to Joe. I mean, Joe's been working at this for a long time. We got that Siemens report some time ago, and he dissected that, went through it. He's talked to some, you know, some firms on how to best address our energy needs. And it took some time. And we're happy to bring this before the board. I know we indicated that we wanted to hold a sum of money in reserve for these HVAC issues because, quite honestly, we're spending a lot of money just to maintain and keep them running.
Do board members have any additional questions?
Not a question. I just want to thank you for this great work. And I just want to second Mr. Chambers' request that if there is excess money, and since we do have to obligate it by December, I think that moving forward with additional buildings or additional energy savings is probably the best thing that we're going to get for our long-term book.
I would say, and I know that Nick indicated to me that probably within the next 30 days, that project's going to be wrapping up on watch. I'm not prepared to bring in a balance to you there, but I'm hoping maybe at the August meeting, we'll have an opportunity to review the accounts and bring some votes before you that will release that money, put it back, and then at a future meeting before December, we can come back to you again.
So question, Mr. Casanova, is will we expect to see savings in our heating line, in our electricity line items?
So I'm hoping as a result of these upgrades, we hopefully will see savings by municipal building. What that will be, I don't know. But certainly, we're seeing an immediate savings by way of rebates that we're going to get by committing to these projects.
Who's paying for the rebates?
Well, technically, probably each one of us. So it comes from two sources right now, national. So it comes from two sources right now, uh, National Grid and Eversource. Uh, they're the ones that have the programs out.
Um, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we, uh, authorize the use of, uh, 1.4 million dollars in ARPA funds for various municipal buildings, HVAC upgrades, uh, the Auburn High School, Town Hall, Police Station, Library, Randall and DPW.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice night.
Joe, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, um, we have no communications. We do have a select board general item. There is a vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees. In our packet, we have a letter, um, from the board chair with her recommendations. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. Um, as much as I, you know, I have a deep respect for Nan Johnson. She served as a Library Board Trustee for many years. She's an active town meeting member, very active in the Friends. And as much as I think she's a great candidate for this, there is a process that the town has to follow under Mass General Law. Mr., uh, Mr. Casanova, the town manager can correct me if I am wrong in that. But I believe we do have to follow a process in Mass General Law when there's a vacancy in the Library Board of Trustees and we have to advertise it. We have to hold a joint meeting between the two boards and then interview the candidates and then vote. Um, so as much as I, you know, respect and appreciate the recommendation from the unanimous Library Board of Trustees, I think we're obligated to follow that state law.
I, I actually agree. I appreciate the letter and I appreciate, um, Mr. Corsi spelling it out for us, but I also think in our own policy, we have to, um, interview and advertise the position.
Do we know who resigned from the committee?
There was, there's not a resignation. There was a failure to elect. So there were three positions open, two candidates for three positions. Lindsay Baker, uh, was on the ballot for the one year. Uh, she got written in for the three year. So she, uh, decided not to take the one year. She took the three-year term, leaving that vacancy.
Write-ins for the, for the one year?
Not enough to beat her vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think what we need to do moving forward is advertise the position.
Be happy to advertise it. I just want to ask if, um, the board feels as though, uh, we can bring this in on the nineteenth or I just don't want to short circuit the advertisement process. That would give us, um, roughly less than thirty days because our next meeting is on the nineteenth.
I don't believe the Library Board of Trustees meets in the summer, do they?
They're, they're not meeting in the month of August. They already had their July meeting, but they're not meeting in August. So the next meeting is, it's up to them.
I would suggest that we bring this matter before both, instead, at a September meeting. Uh, but we will get this advertised and posted this week.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving along, we have no proclamations or recognitions. We do have a gift, gift acceptance. To DPW Recreation, um, from Anderson Windows and Doors for eight thousand dollars for the summer concert series. Is there a motion?
Um, I move that we accept the gift from Anderson Windows and Doors, a gift of eight thousand dollars, um, to pay for summer concerts in the park. We, um, accept it with gratitude.
Just ask that, uh, you amend your motion, um, to include a letter, uh, drafted and signed by the chair on the board's behalf.
And I include in the motion, um, a request that we send a letter to, of thank you to the, uh, Anderson Windows and Doors, where they get.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, next we have an application for a drain layers license. Do board members have any questions?
Um, I make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town in any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply to any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Um, next we have a vote on our appointment of election workers. My understanding is, is there, is going to be an additional name added to this list? And I recommend, I would prefer to take the vote when everybody is included. Um, so could we hold this to the next meeting? Is that, would that work with you, Ginger, or is this something we need to do?
If we can hold up a list that I gave you and hold off on the one that just left me really frustrated, I would prefer that because I need to have
Okay.
Is there a reason why we don't vote the name? The, the agenda is just, I mean, the agenda did not include the names. It just included the, the voting. So I think it is, was legally filed per open meeting law.
Can I think because of the, the late entry, could the board consider amending this to include that additional name?
I mean, it's up to you. I, I have enough time afterwards for this one person. And I don't find more election workers. I need to contact the two committees to see if they have, um, suggestions. So I'll be looking for one more here.
Okay.
I, I think to address the concerns of, of, of board member, Mr. Corain, I, I would vote the list as it has been submitted.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm saying I don't have a concern with adding the name. I, I think it was the, the agenda is just vote appointment of election workers until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. It doesn't include the name, so we're not amending the, the title. Uh, we're not amending the agenda item itself within the forty-eight hours.
It says per the list provided.
That's in our notes. That's not the agenda item. So I'm, I'm fine either way. I just don't want to hold up the process for the town clerk's office that if we need to take this vote, we can, I think we can add a name or not.
Given that there is going to be a second list, I think I would prefer to vote this as is and have the person that just, um, committed yesterday added to the second list.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just.
That's, that's fine with me. That's fine with me.
For the chair, can I ask, you mentioned, um, reaching out to committees to get additional names. Is there a process? Is that the process is just to reach out and ask for names?
I have to reach out to the, um, the Democratic Committee and the Republican Committee to see if they have some people that they know that would, excuse me, that would want to be an election worker. I have to be, I have to try and have an even amount of the two different parties. Unenrolled, um, voters don't really count in that. I can use them wherever. But I need to try and make sure that I have an even amount of Democratic and Republican.
Okay, so your request is more for affiliated people, not for unenrolled and?
Correct. Yeah, I have, I have a very large amount of unenrolled. I just want to reach out to those two parties to. Okay.
I'm, I'm fine either way. If you guys want to vote the list as is and come back at another time, because it sounds like you'll have more than one name.
Yes, I, I will. Okay. So that, I mean, that I think is what I would be most comfortable with. If anybody feels strongly otherwise.
Nope, as long as we're not holding up the, knowing the elections are about a month away, or a month and a half away, so.
No, perfectly. Okay, good, perfect, okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, list to appoint the individuals, um, provided by the town clerk. On this.
Second.
Until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much. Perfect. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next, we have town manager items. I know this was, Mr. Carpenter can't be here tonight, um, and this was something that he wanted to be a part of and discuss. So I'm asking that we hold the, um, discussion on the wage theft committee and the member item discussion on a, um, LIP working group until he is able to attend.
Can I just ask before we move that? I think the town manager just wanted clarity. I didn't know what clarity he might be looking for. And we can certainly hold off on voting, but I just want to make sure that.
Sure.
On the, the committee makeup, you were looking for particular direction?
So, um, as I, I think I stated in updated the last meeting, we reached out to CMR PC who indicated to a discussion with our town planner that they had no policies that they could send us or refer us to, although selectmen, Mr. Carpenter indicated and provided to me a policy that was adopted several years ago by the town of Grafton. We have reviewed that. It is somewhat different makeup than what we would be considering because they have CPA funds and things of that nature that they're applying within that policy. I also wanted to have an, a conversation with Mr. Carpenter as it relates to what he sent me. Uh, but he has been unavailable due to, um, reasons that we're all aware of. I don't know. I'm, I, I think the suggestion from the town of Grafton, they utilized someone from the planning board, someone from ZBA. Other than that, they weren't familiar, because I think it was adopted in two thousand and eight or something like that. They weren't familiar with the composition of the committee that made that recommendation. But they made some suggestions who they believe should be on that committee. So we can provide that to you as well. But in terms of the composition, that decision has to be made by the board. And I think you were seeking some guidance from town administration as how other communities are doing it. There aren't many out there that have a, a friendly LIP policy in place, so.
Thank you. I'm, I'm okay waiting for further discussion. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything and I come prepared for this.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so we're going to hold nine A and eleven A. And that leaves our second session of public comment. Um, it does not appear that we have anybody for, um, the second session of public comment. Finally, in our package number thirteen, we have meeting minutes from May. Are there any adjustments, um, edits? All right, I was seeing none. I will accept them as read. We would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We are adjourned.